Yeah, well, it's the whole policy.
It's the policy.
Yeah, so you mustn't get any of this left over there.
Correct.
I'm completely not understanding what's happening here.
Here's what's happening. Some of our local civic groups are not allowed to come into any of our schools for any type of the handout letter, track flyers, or anything.
Right.
Okay, which includes the Boys and Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts, and several of those organizations like that. So we've talked to Mr. Bradshaw with the old policy, with the one that was just recently approved, and asked to write some language that would give us a little more flexibility where they can come in and recruit the work, help recruit some of their membership, or get students to participate in their groups.
Well, based on this new policy, we would not be able to then keep out those kinds of materials that we've found objectionable in the past. We're just reopening the door again. I mean, if you don't have a policy, or have a policy that is how you all wanted it last year, which is needed to be much more restrictive, I mean, now you're going to be the judge around to what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, which leaves itself for a challenge by anybody who's sort of discriminating against me. Because of the nature, you're saying it's proselytizing. I'm saying it's not. We have lots of words political in here completely.
I'm sorry, Ms. Richman, that was an oversight on my part. I have changed that to say religious or political. No advertising shall be proselytizing, or political in future. So that was because it's a workshop, you can work within how you want. And I spoke to Mr. Kennedy about it, and also there was a couple of other changes. Probably one of them that business partners, we didn't have three business partners at the school that's recognized by the superintendent or president, instead of the principal. And then G. adding a line that talks about that it shall be at the principal's discretion as to when to distribute the material.
Where is that policy?
No, ma'am.
Where are these recommendations that you're making?
No, these were ones I called him about, and I added.
Correct.
These were things that, as I went through it, just in my wordsmithing, I just thought these were things that were still either missing or needed to be amended. Again, that was if we were still moving in the direction of changing anything.
So yours is the red.
The red is the, the red part is the policy as it is written today.
Okay.
So really what I see here is we're just going back to what we had before?
I don't think so, because I think we're allowing anybody that wanted to make a dime with our kids at, throw their name in the hat.
Who is this excluding?
Anybody, anybody who is going to want to charge our children.
Doesn't say that.
Not for profit, doesn't it?
Where is it?
Handouts for advertising for a profit product or service shall not be approved with the following exceptions.
Well, they're saying we can't have people selling stuff to our kids. Is advertising a for-profit product, it's not, that doesn't say that we can't hand out materials that are promoting a for-profit company, there's a difference.
That's what I mean.
I think, you know what, quite honestly, Mr. Stevens, you're the one that did all this, right? Or your department, who did, who got a juicy approval?
Yes, they did that.
Okay.
Yes.
So tell us, in your opinion, based on how it was before and how it is now, which is the way that works the best, or has worked the best for the school system as far as trouble and headaches and issues and stuff like that?
As far as for the teachers, you know, handing out stuff out every day is a huge issue, and it takes away from curriculum, those kind of things, which is not something that we wish to do.
Okay. So you don't go back to those things?
No, that's not, that's not something that we would want to go back to, I think that you would want to go back to as far as that goes. But if it's a limited distribution, depending on what the superintendent and Wes have looked through, sometimes we have a policy that allows just everything to go on, and then sometimes you tighten it up so much that it becomes so restrictive that the community people have a lot of issues with it, and you may want to try to seek some type of compromise in between the two as far as that goes.
Okay, so why don't we just add a word in here? Can't we just add a word, shall be solely for instructional, educational, or?
Community services.
Community service, or educate, youth programs, extracurricular programs, something. And we are still excluding commercial, religious, political. Can it be that simple, Mr. Bradshaw, that we can include somehow a word that would allow, like the Boy Scouts and even Little League, because they're youth programs, or students, or?
Are you asking me, Ms. Richman, like, in the policy that we have now, just adding a word?
Like what's in red over top?
Yeah.
And adding to that.
And forget all this other stuff, because now, again, I just think we're just saying a lot of things, but what it really means is come on down and give us your flyer.
And that's not something I think that we would want to go to as far as that goes from an instructional standpoint. But I think there are some ways that you can distribute possibly materials that wouldn't be quite as invasive into the classroom as far as that goes. You know, Parks and Rec does it, they do it only two times a year as far as that goes, and they put everything, this is what's going to happen in the fall, this is what's going to happen in the spring and the summer, those kind of things. So you may be able to look at options like that, Allison.
If you would like me to look at, or just modifying that policy, I would be hesitant to tell you one or two words to put in there right this second without having the opportunity to contemplate that and to think it through. But I would be more than happy to do that, to see if I can just modify existing policies slightly to allow for what you're talking about.
The one thing that I noticed, though, that the policy didn't have, that this does have, and I'm not talking about necessarily all the details, but for example, the fact that it states in here what has to be in the disclaimer.
Okay.
Those types of things, I thought, were certainly...
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
If previously, when we were allowing flyers into the schools, we had a disclaimer that we had made them put on the bottom of the flyers to approve. I think we did have a disclaimer characteristic in this policy because it's solely for educational purposes, but I can always add.
Just because I think sometimes if the school's handed out, the implication still is that we are endorsing it, and I just prefer that that's not the case. One of the comments, though, that throughout this, and again, and where my, I'm really torn on this because I've sat here and been a part of where this protected us, I believe, in this situation, and at the same time, I know that I have Little Leagues and other groups that are coming and saying, hey, we are down half of what we used to have because we can't get the message out that couple of times a year. Now, I do think that we had made available during registration and stuff, or continue to say to them, listen, you need to go out to those if you can and set up the tables, because those are certainly times they can do that, too. But if there is a way to at least maybe accommodate the Boy Scouts in that while not opening up Pandora's Box?
The Boys and Girl Scouts.
Those, I think that we do that. I mean, maybe I'm just seeing it super simplistically. I just really thought it was an interpretation of what is defined as educational, because to me, again, I think the Boy Scouts do a lot with stars and rocketry and things of that nature that are totally educational in nature. The Boys and Girls Clubs does after-school tutoring. You know, athletics is a part of our, you know, it's part of Sunshine State standards when it comes to, you know, the work. So to me, those, I always thought were, did, now, I think Wes and I may not agree on this, and I certainly don't have the credentials that Wes does, but as to what defines or what allows us to define that. So I think less in the policy is still more. I would rather see...
Why don't we work on it and bring it back on the 28th of August and workshop it on that day?
Well, you know, it's not our agenda, so we can talk about it kind of if something comes to you. I mean, do you all agree with that or not?
I think the intent is the same with what you're talking about and what you two are talking about. It's just you're saying, make it a little more simple than what this is here.
Ms. Richman, I'm probably not going to come up with something. If you, if you pull it from the agenda, then you don't have to take action on it. Otherwise, if it's on the agenda, you're either going to vote down the change or table it. So it's how we all want to handle it.
Couldn't we just table it when we come to that?
Well, I'm just thinking procedurally how you handle it once it's on the agenda. So that's fine. If you want to table it till the 28th, then you may just come. But it won't be, but it won't be this policy that will come back, it will be something different.
But we could table it, and then you could rework it, and then we just have a line item that we vote that one down and vote the other one or something.
How would we all?
And here's my question, and this is the one Wes, and I didn't think about it until today, actually. Given the circumstance that the previous policy protected us, or allowed us, that we were kind of off the hook on worrying about certain issues, you take the constitutional issue where they were trying to force us to do something which clearly our policy was in violation of our policy. I'm not sure that, even with what I kind of tried to mark up here, is this, would that be enough to protect that type of situation again?
That would have, because when I, the modification of C3 would say religious or political in nature, the problem with the constitutional book wasn't the fact that it was the Constitution, it was the fact that it was being promoted.
It was with the other information within there, the religious and, and actually the solicitation of other books.
I think we actually got constitutions from somewhere that had no affiliation with anything and actually distributed it to our students, so.
It was the difference between content of material, which was educational, and those that sponsored it, which were non-educational.
Correct.
And were political in nature.
Correct.
Because I think the Congress may have to take this off the back page, but we're more than happy to...
Well, here's another one. A group handout shall not be distributed to students unless the request provides a sufficient number of copies for every student in the school. We're not going to give every student in the school an invitation to join the Girl Scouts.
Well, that's, I can modify that. I think the intent of that was that we're not making copies.
I know, but here's, well, I think we can just say, you know, you hand out what you have. So I'm saying, there's so many things in here where we were very simple in saying, the only thing we're going to hand out are things that are instructional, educational, and we're committed by to make that decision, and all of the other stuff isn't what we're talking about. Now, I don't understand this last H, I mean, I'm sorry, F. Handouts for advertising a for-profit product or service shall not be approved with the following, oh, with following exceptions, okay, exception. See, now, those exceptions are the things that we want to have as an exception in here. Maybe that's all we need to do.
And then, you know, the other thing that I think has always been brought up was what Mr. Stevens had said, and that was why I had inserted something, I just use my simplistic wording, under H, but that I didn't want us also to be, the principals to be bound, that they didn't have some discretion as to, well, you, we gave these to you and you should have had them out. No, it's at the principal's discretion when they can find the time to get it out. I think it shouldn't be, you know, that they should have this control over when that is. Maybe they get it out Tuesday, maybe they get it out next week.
Okay, here we go. How about this, Wes? So up in the red shall be solely for instructional and educational use, and may include, then your items listed, after-school programs, those advertised as services to students, business partners, if these are the four things that you said that would be recognized, that would be acceptable to us.
But that's a for-profit. So that would eliminate your nonprofit.
Okay, so we could say, and that could include nonprofit or for-profit.
And it'd be both.
Organizations.
I would just prefer if you would let me kind of rework it and bring it back to you.
Okay, but I think that would be a good way to put it. Including, say, including, and then include those kinds of entities that we recognize that would be acceptable to us to distribute their thing. And I do like this disclaimer also, that's how you include.
I do, too.
Yeah.
That disclaimer is good.
Okay. Do you want to get a motion to table to, what is it?
We don't have to motion.
Okay, okay.
So that's table.
Okay, good.
Can I run it? I thought this was the act of the...
And what is the date? I just need it to...
Well, we're not even on the table, because it's, you just have to do workshop.
Okay, August 28th. Okay, re-workshop August 28th.
I also think Mr. Kennedy had a good suggestion on principals have discretion as to, when materials are distributed, I mean, the timetable should be left at the discretion of the principal when it's at their schedule, and not necessarily, I'm a organization, can you get this out in the next two days, blah, blah, blah? No, we can't get it out because we're testing.
Right.
Okay? So if you can't bring it back, fine, then we're not liable, we're not going to do this for you. You have to plan that a little better. I mean, I think the principal has to have that discretion and say, no, we're testing or whatever, in case my knee, so it'd be okay if we do it next week. Well, then next week's okay. I mean, that's up to the principal's discretion. I think that's going to be more, because we're testing so much now, it's... I mean, I know, I know people would like to have it done because it's their timely fashion, but it may not be our timely fashion, and they have to accept what we do.
Okay, so August 28th will be reworded, and so the idea of making it a little simpler, but still doing what we want to do to welcoming people who are coming in to serve, students, nonprofits, or whatever, if they come in to serve the students.
Maybe you work the justice of word or two, so.
Well, or seven.
But I'll do it.
Well, I still like, you know, with the, some version of inserting in that, too, and maybe that we've covered that in the, in the previous policy, but that C3, those with including the political, I don't know that we included that specific word previously. Oh, we did, never mind. Yes, never mind.
Okay, I'm finished with Deputy Dr. Oden. Any more comments? Okay. I think then Ms. Bryant does some of these, and she's going to give a presentation to us.
All right, well, Jamie Volmer spoke at the Florida School Boys Association, and the day that he spoke, I think I was the only one there.
You were the only one last year?
So was Kenny.
More killing it in a wheelchair.
I was so impressed with Jamie Volmer, I always have been. And you know what really got me was, I was talking to Ms. Hemel about it, and she reaches in her purse and pulls out this thing from Jamie Volmer, and she uses it all the time. He needs to, he needs to be recognized, oh, I do, too. He needs to be recognized as a leader and an advocate for American public schools, because he is fighting the fight. But he didn't always, he started out as a businessman, a rude, arrogant person that thought schools should be run like a business, and until a high school English teacher taught him better.
Blueberries.
Blueberries. The blueberry story. And ever since then, he has turned his life around to make public education a top priority. And I'd like for you to look at the video that Mr. Simon's going to access for us. The burden. Thank you.
The following presentation is part of the Great Conversation Toolkit. Products and services designed to help educators hit their communities, create schools that unfold the full potential of every child. Driver's education.
Business education.
Organized athletics.
Domestic science.
Immunizations.
Industrialized.
Food and screenings.
Art and music.
This is the story about America and America's public schools. Specifically, it's about how we, as a society, have changed what we ask our public schools to do. Once upon a time, the mandate was simple. Help us teach our children what they need to know. Not anymore. I speak and write about public education, and I contend that this story is important. Our response will determine everyone's future, whether or not we have children in school. For the first time in our history, social and economic conditions demand that we unfold the full potential of every child. This goal has never been achieved anywhere in the world, and the only way that we can succeed is by working together to remove the obstacles of student success, both in and out of school. But instead of accepting a shared, community-wide responsibility for student success, we act as though our teachers and administrators can and should do it alone. Every year, we add to the mountain of academic, social, psychological, and medical responsibilities that we've heaped upon our schools. Every year, the burden grows. This is a story of the creation of this burden, and it starts a long time ago. America's first public schools were established in the mid-1700s. Most were small, rural, and locally controlled. They were designed to teach young people, originally white boys, basic reading, writing, and arithmetic, while transmitting American culture. Over time, lessons in civics, history, geography, and science were added, but the curriculum was limited for 150 years. By the beginning of the 20th century, however, ways of immigration and changed attitudes about educating both girls and minorities brought many more children into the classroom. America's leaders saw public schools as a logical place to select and sort young people for life in the industrial age. It was at this time that we began to shift non-academic duties to the schools. The trend has accelerated ever since. From 1900 to 1910, the new responsibilities were mainly related to student health. We added lessons in basic hygiene, nutrition. Schools began to give immunizations, and we screened for vision, hearing, and dental problems. From 1910 to 1940, child labor laws swept the nation. The multiple choice test was created, and we saw the first wave of standardized tests. We also began tracking students, and to this end, we added vocational education, including the industrial arts and agricultural education, domestic science, including sewing and cooking. Phys ed was expanded, including a growing roster of team sports, and school transportation was mandated. For decades, kids had to get the school on their own, now we had to go fetch them. In the 1940s, a decade overshadowed by a horrific war and a remarkable recovery, we added business education. Music and art classes were expanded. Speech, including drama, became a separate academic subject. Half-day kindergartens were first introduced, and school lunch programs appeared. We take this for granted today, but it was a huge step to shift to the schools the responsibility of feeding America's children one-third of their daily meals. In the 1950s, the student population exploded as the first baby boomers poured into the schools. The Supreme Court struck down school segregation. The Soviets launched Sputnik. Panic ensued, and in response, science and math education were greatly expanded. Foreign language requirements were strengthened. Fire and tornado drills became compulsory. Driver's education was offered to the delight of parents everywhere, and sex education was introduced. Sometimes I wonder how we made it as a species prior to the 50s. In the 1960s, the pace of change accelerated. We saw new waves of standardized testing, and Congress made its first regulatory push into public education by passing Title I of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which introduced Head Start and bilingual education. The College Board offered advanced placement programs. We added adult education, courses in career education, and programs in recreation education, and of course, peace studies. Bless those 60s. In the 1970s, the breakup of the American family accelerated. Vietnam came to a close. Watergate changed American politics forever, and we added drug and alcohol abuse education, parenting education. African-American studies introduced students to the contributions of black leaders, including Frederick Douglass, Dr. King, and Harriet Tubman. Women's studies spread from college to high school curriculums. The Supreme Court ruled in favor of free speech rights for students. And Title IX expanded athletic programs for girls, nearly doubling the cost of sports. Special education was mandated by the feds. We added talented and gifted programs, alternative education, and character education. Environmental education was first taught, and school breakfast programs appeared. Now, schools must feed their students two-thirds of their daily meals, and for many, it's the only nutritious food they get. In the 1980s, the floodgates blew open as global competition began to change the U.S. economy, forcing millions of women to enter the workforce. There's a huge new wave of standardized testing. New technologies began to appear in the schools, and we added keyboarding and computer education, sexual abuse prevention education, stranger danger education, anti-smoking education, teen pregnancy awareness, abstinence education, global education, multicultural, non-sexist education, Hispanic heritage education. We added preschool programs for children at risk, full-day kindergartens, after-school programs for children of working parents, jump start, early start, even start, prime start, and child abuse monitoring became a legal requirement for all teachers. In the 1990s, the school reform movement shifted into high gear, and it collided with the spread of technology. Whiteboards began to replace chalkboards. The World Wide Web was born. Generation X was replaced by Generation Y, and we added computer labs and internet education, tech prep and school-to-work programs, distance learning, homeless education and its effects on children, HIV/AIDS education, death education. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act was passed, which greatly expanded the scope of special education for children with disabilities. America 2000 initiatives produced a wave of red tape and testing. Four years later, all 2000 initiatives unleashed more red tape and testing. We saw new programs in bicycle safety, gun safety, water safety. We added conflict resolution, annual sessions of CPR training. We strengthened dropout commission, instituted gang intervention programs, and as a result of isolated but horrific acts of violence, we saw an unprecedented effort to ensure school security. And finally, in the first decade of the 21st century, driven by the pressures of a rapidly changing society, particularly those posed by an increasingly literate global workforce, we have added no child left behind, bullying prevention, elevator and escalator safety instruction, obesity monitoring for all students, counseling for kids with eating disorders, courses on organ donor awareness, steroid abuse, media literacy, personal findings, internet safety, health and wellness, race to the top, and STEM programs. And we've not added a single minute to the school calendar in six decades. Look at this list. Look at what we've done. For all the talk we hear about test scores, accountability, merit pay, competition and choice, for all the criticism leveled in our public schools, no one acknowledges that the contract between our society and our schools has changed. It's no longer help us teach our children, it's raise our kids.
Good point.
No generation of teachers and administrators in the history of the world has had to fulfill this mandate, and each year, the burden grows. We bombard our schools with new responsibilities. We insist that they compensate for society's failures and neglect. All the while, we demand that they meet rising academic expectations. The truth is, social and economic conditions demand that we unfold the full potential of every child. Our futures are tied to their success as never before, whether or not we have children in school. But this is a job for all of us. We must all come together and help our schools remove the obstacles to student success. Because if there's only one thing I've learned in 20 years of working towards this goal, it's this: Our schools cannot do it alone. They need our help. They need our understanding and support to produce the graduates and the citizens we need.
I'm exhausted. What is this, yes? Okay. So he thinks we need to go into the community and have a discussion, but before we can go into the community and have a discussion, we have to establish trust, understanding, we have to get permission, and get their support. Those are the four things that he said. Trust, understanding, permission, and support. And when we start the conversation in our communities, we need to remember five S's, just five. Start. Stop badmouthing yourself and others. Shift. Shift your attention from the negative to the positive. Shift your attention from the negative to the positive. Share. Share something positive about our schools every day. Sustain. Once you begin, keep going. And start. Start now. It works.
That was in the video. I watched it.
Starting with the blueberries story, which I will tell you as I've shared it out, I've gotten more and more comments from teachers, you know, with kind of giving amens, and I make sure to say that it's been, I can remember, I think you, didn't you all go to the legislators with blueberries?
I did.
That's what I thought. I was gonna say. So, and I've told them that you... Thank you for bringing it forward.
On this, on this, um, is it a DVD? On this DVD, he tells the blueberry story in another section, and he goes over the communication part more fully. There are two more parts to it.
We're gonna make this available to schools to check out for, you know, whether it's a PTA event maybe or something, because this is, you know, I could see stacks playing this.
Oh, that would be very good. It's a great idea.
The Education Foundation wants to watch it too. Okay, on that note...
Just a personal, I have a personal comment. A personal comment is, I thought it was interesting when they decided to go in the 50s and said, "We brought the school lunch program into Costco." My first eight years at school was in two different schoolhouses. One was, we didn't even know what kindergarten was in those days. You remember the first grade, and you went to the fourth grade. Three rooms, four grades. Then you went fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Then you went four grades in three rooms. And they had three teachers. And you just went back and forth. That was kind of the way it was. The fun making about the lunch program was, I never had a hot lunch in school, ever, until I went to high school. I did have, this is kind of interesting, in the fourth grade, PTA decided, and we thought this was a big deal, and we're fourth graders. We got a hot potato, I mean, we got a baked potato like once a month brought to us. We have butter in our hands, and so we found, you know, simpler times, but that was pretty cool as far as asking. And I also remember the health program. That for years, I wore a tattoo on my back that said, "Oh, positive." We got tattooed in the fourth grade. Only in our area of the state. I don't even remember anyplace else, but I've kind of checked on that. But I don't know if it's Lake County Schools or whatever it was, but I had that for years and years and years, and I wore it off. But that was, that was what they decided if you were an accident, they'd throw you over on your back, and then you'd say, "Oh, positive, negative eight," whatever. And we did that fourth grade. That scared the heck out of us when we got tattooed, but that's...
When I was looking at this, and really, it seems overwhelming, the work that's presented. But you know, I think with a school board, the same thing is reflected. Because I know all of us, our workload has increased and increased. I don't think Pat sleeps at all.
But I dream about it.
But the workload more and more, because all of this is happening. We have to keep up with it. We don't know what's happening. It reflects, oh, that's true.
So I just wanted to share with this then, Ginger. I went to meet with one of the Republican meetings. I didn't do a single one of those S's, actually, I have to say. I was one of the ends, like the neighbors. Speaking to a group of retired citizens who didn't have a single child in the school system or a grandchild in the school system. They understood the challenges that we were facing and were fully supportive of making changes to our system. So I would get each one of you a copy of a blank petition, so you can start your own petition drive. And if you need another copy of the resolution, I'm sure I'd like to be here right now.
Anybody have any objection to me doing it digitally on my blog?
Picture on the back. I wish recycling paper. So I was very closely surprised because I wasn't quite sure how the reception would be. They were sort of the test case audience.
Very good.
So I think that we should work the next couple of months, between now and the election in November, and we know who our next legislature will be, and try to present as many signatures from citizens to that person who may give their mission to work on helping resolve some issues that are happening in the environment. And that's a great foundation. I would love to see that list. You know what? Can we have somebody print out that list of all the things we require? Is that your book?
Maybe it is.
Yeah, that would be, or...
If it isn't, I'll xeroxed my worn-out flyer upstairs.
She has a flyer with the list.
Oh, yeah, would you do that?
There is a program out there now that, I was just reading about it. Mr. Kenny, this may be something that you know about. Or, Mr. Geddes, if you can make a photograph and a video. It's a new app or something. So why couldn't we, could we do that?
In a heartbeat.
Just take that section of that list?
I can do that.
Of course, he's standing in front of his list. We could do without him.
We can fix that. I'd be exposure. I don't know about that, but... That's what I do in the middle of the night.
Pat's presentation was an excellent presentation. I was there, and I listened to what she said, totally organized, totally hit the high points.
I did know what you were talking about.
Very well received, very well received.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it was. I was surprised.
It was very well received.
I thought they were gonna pause the comment, but they did.
No, they don't, no.
And no pitchforks and...
No, they all had stories.
No rotten tomatoes.
They all had a story to tell me about their children.
Often, the older population gets it, because I think we're talking about going back to what we've been, you know, the three Rs, if we could only get back to the three Rs.
Right.
Ms. Deitchman, you, I think, had brought it before. Are we slowly working towards a position to give to our legislators that goes beyond just the sentiment in the high stakes, but actually, I know that we have led, I'm not talking about just the legislative days, and I'm not just talking about, but where, as the session comes forward, there are things that Citrus County, I know we have, we really are on the forefront of looking at these issues and seeing what works, because I think Citrus County is a bit of an example of a large part of Florida. And we know how it works. I mean, we know what's working.
Yes. What do we do last, and we all kind of centering our ideas for legislative platform?
Yes, yeah.
I like the idea of having a conversation, maybe coming up with a more cohesive statement, maybe.
I think so, and I think it's the time to do it, because in the past, maybe it came in many different quarters. People really didn't want to put ideas together. But I think now people are saying, "Wait a minute. We can make a difference, and we're going to make a difference, and we're going to band together to make the difference." So I like the idea of making a statement from us to the legislature.
Because so many times, our parents are saying, "So what can we do?"
Right.
And, you know, it's, we'll pay attention, you know. I mean, we need to give...
Well, we need to have a legislative platform that parents can certainly get pieced. It's not just us saying we need more better funding or any of that. It's gotta be specific. And the latest thing that I just read about, and I don't know, Mr. Clutter, I was gonna mention this during the high school progression plans, but I could, maybe put you on notice now to, you know, I'm gonna ask this question. I just read an article in the Orlando Sentinel that said, apparently under the Acceleration Act, because that's House Bill 7059, that if a student has 24 credits, that are the required credits for graduation, the student has to be considered as a graduate and can no longer take dual enrollment courses through the high school without paying tuition to the college. Yeah, I was surprised when I read that, but, and so some school districts are saying, for a purpose, they were gonna switch from a seven-period day to a six-period day to slow them down. I'm thinking, that's ridiculous, that's ridiculous. Yeah, I think it was Seminole County or something. I just read it yesterday on, I think, the Orlando Sentinel. I thought it was an option, not a mandate. But, you know, if you don't read it carefully, you miss that stuff.
What would be wrong with sitting down with our legislators, I suppose, and a little more informal setting with this? And just talking to them. It would have to be an open forum meeting, I'm sure, in the sunshine. But invite them in and say, "This is what we'd like to do, and these are the reasons why we signed this resolution, and for a school board to sign this resolution. And this is what we see on a local level that is giving us concerns with our students." And you go talk to Charlie, and Jimmy Smith, and whoever else is going there. And I guess you still would have to open up, and it would be less formal than them sitting there and us. Maybe we could have a different type of setting. I think sometimes you get more done that way than you do, especially when they're at home. They're at home now. They're with us. They're not at town heads. They're listening to their constituents right now. That might be the time to do it. Just throwing it out as a suggestion.
I guess we've talked about that. In election season, I guess it's kind of tough sometimes to know who you should be talking to.
Well, that's true, but you could talk to one, not to the other, because one is still...
Well, you know, we could tentatively, for example, like in a November workshop, take a portion and maybe take an hour or two and have it upstairs, you know, in that, and say, "Listen, we'd like to just invite you so that we can have a cross-table conversation about this is what we're going to give you, but we want to talk about it. We don't just want to give you a list. We want to explain to you why we know these are, we have reasons behind the positions that we're taking."
Yeah, that's really good idea. I know when I talked with Jimmy Smith a while back on an issue, where he received information from his group of people. We had information from ours. And when we sat down and talked about it, we understood what, why the positions were as they were, because from two different sources. And we figured out that together, wait a minute, there's some middle ground here. It doesn't have to be black or white. So I think that discussion is a very good idea.
And I think we've, you know, we've so much gotten to the place in the legislation, in legislators in the past, in the legislation, where we're wanting to kill a bill, or we're trying to just say, "Absolutely not," or "Absolutely our way."
And ram it through block and block.
Right. And instead of saying, "Let's massage it. Let's, you know, sit there, and if we don't like, are we throwing all the baby out, you know, with the bathwater, or can we find something?" And I think that's where we have often made the mistake in the last couple of sessions. We have a leadership that we may not always like the decisions, but they're there. And if we don't kind of let them have some wins, but get in our own, in the meantime, I don't think we're gonna continue to get anything accomplished, and we really desperately need to get some...
And I hear all of you here, we don't just go in and never have, I feel, with a complaint. This is what we don't like, and that's the end of it. We go in with suggestions, with thoughts on why we don't like it.
And what can be done to make it better.
What can be done to make it better. We offer the positives.
Well, I don't think legislators have really put how disruptive this thing is to us and students' learning process and their environment, and how it's a disruptive environment all the time, where you just get things going in your class, or you're disrupted. And you're disrupted, and you get a go on, and you're disrupted. And that's not a good learning environment. I think if they understand why we are on a local level. And I think sometimes you get more comfort than you do, like you said, on state level or regional level. And it doesn't matter, we talk to workers whether they're running for seat or not, but they maybe have some influence. But if one legislator is running and one is not, so that's, that's where I think we should go.
We're talking about a time in November. Mr. Geddes, you suggested a time in November.
I was just thinking that, you know, if we're talking about something like this, if we did it in the November workshop, I forget, I think we still have a November workshop doing that. Well, it doesn't have to be even that date, but if it was later on, so it was after the election, then at least we know who our players for sure are. And they're gonna be more willing to listen anyway, because...
They run.
Yeah, exactly.
So November, we don't have a workshop, you're saying?
Well, Mrs. Deitchman, I mean, we have the organizational meeting set by statute. But the following week would be when we have our fourth Tuesday workshop, and that's when they're scheduling y'all's, the joint conference this year. That starts on Tuesday. It's Tuesday through Friday.
On that 27th?
Yes, ma'am, for chairmen, vice-chairmen, and committees on that Tuesday. The regular, actual conference starts on Friday.
We could even do it at the December meeting, if anybody wants it. You know, we could do it again at like a 1:00 or something before... I mean, and depending on whether we have expulsion.
You know, we don't have to just meet on Tuesdays. We can also have another day too.
You don't? I'm okay with that. Thank you. That's almost so obvious that it's...
That makes it easier.
Other than, I think that's a good suggestion. If we made it a different day, you'd have to work out also everybody's schedule, but, and this is especially, this is what we're just gonna talk about. We're gonna talk about these issues. It's not gonna include anything else. We're gonna just sit down and talk to our legislators about the high-stakes testing and some of the other things, and this is what we have concern on a local level. That's all.
Okay, so we have to combine their schedule and our schedule. So narrowing it down to a month, are y'all thinking about November after the elections? That's the month, and the day is depending on what the others can do. Is that what you're saying? Or would you rather roll to December?
We don't have a workshop in December.
No, we could establish another day.
We could roll it in somewhere, yes.
Yeah, we could have a day.
Because if it gets too close to Christmas, too close to Thanksgiving, too close to Christmas, I don't want to talk to you.
Right.
Well, there is a Tuesday, December 4th. I don't have anything written down.
I don't have anything on mine. I was just looking at that Tuesday.
Oh, is that the week, that's probably the week of FSBA?
No.
No, it's actually...
You know, it used to be that week.
It did, yeah.
Actually, the good thing about that too is it would be after FSBA, and if there's any new information or anything that we're getting out of FSBA, we could certainly include that in our dialogue.
How do you feel about it, Deitchman?
It's open. So, um, the more conference, so that's... Linda, can you check, we don't know one person. Why don't we go ahead and set a date and ask them if they can meet December 4th, set the date?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, because we're not gonna have a workshop in November, so why don't we plan on having a workshop December 4th? And why don't we send them an invitation, ask them to join us in discussing legislative platforms? If they come, they come. If they can't, they can't. We can't, you know, say, "We're not gonna make this. We're not gonna have the workshop if you don't come."
And we wanna meet in the upstairs conference room?
Yeah.
Upstairs conference room?
What upstairs? The big upstairs?
Yeah.
Just has to be plenty of room to hold them and the rest.
They're invited, then.
Yeah, we can do that.
If they don't come, they send their aides.
We don't want to be sitting up here and them sitting down here, you know, saying, "What an informal."
At a time?
The big one. Where we've done it in Southers before.
At a time, what would you prefer? Morning?
10 or 11 o'clock.
10 o'clock, sounds really good. Okay, 10? So 10 a.m. and December 4th?
Right now.
She may be in Paris before we...
December 4th, is that where we're at?
Yes, at 10 a.m. and the conference. 10. Any other comments on the video?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it in.
Just disappointing you can't have blueberry muffins for us.
We're going to go ahead and adjourn.
How come we don't have any blueberries?
No blueberry muffins?
Don't pressure a lot.
We're adjourned the workshop, and we'll reconvene at 3:00.
What?